Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight for the Gladstone Planning Commission regular meeting on Tuesday, February 20th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tammy, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Sure.
Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero. Chair Smith.
Present. Thank you. Let's do the flag salute, please.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And the next item on the agenda is oath of office. So myself and Commissioner Wees will come down as well. Can you do us both at the same time?
Um, I can, yes.
Why don't we do that?
We can do that.
Okay.
Uh, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Natalie Wees.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of planning commissioner.
Perform the duties of planning commissioner.
For the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
For the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Congratulations to both of you, and I'll have you each sign this here.
Okay, next on the agenda is nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. Let's start with, I will entertain them, any motions for nominations for Chair.
I'd like to nominate Natalie Smith to be our Chair.
I second.
Anybody else have anything? No?
That motion was by Pat Smith, seconded by Council Commissioner Volbada.
Do you need to do a roll call vote?
And I will do a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. Next, for Vice Chair nominations. I'll nominate Langston.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other nominations?
I would second that nomination.
Okay.
A motion was made by Chair Smith, seconded by Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
For the record, seconded by Labonte.
I'm sorry, excuse me, seconded by Commissioner Labonte.
It's been a long day.
It has been a long day. Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Andrea Langston is Vice Chair. Now to go on the consent agenda, all items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a com- a commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the council agenda. Item number two, approval of the December 19 meeting minutes. Then the regular agenda, item number three, monthly planning report. Item number four, continued public hearing regarding the Gl- excuse me, TXT dash 23 dash 03 Gladstone Municipal Code Amendments for Chapter 17.7A8 for Home Occupations. Item five, public hearing for file DR dash 24 dash 02, new building and onsite improvements for eating and drinking venue, including indoor taproom, mobile food vendors, and outdoor seating at 140 West Arlington. Item number six, appointment of planning commission member to the Town Center Stakeholder Advisory Committee. Number seven, it's just informative, but we will probably read it out loud. The letter from Greg Philo from Fire Restoration regarding file DR dash 23 dash 06, and then business from the public. So I'd entertain a motion for approval of the December 19, 2023 meeting minutes.
I will motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Wees made the motion and it was seconded by Commissioner, I'm drawing a blank.
Labonte.
Thank you, Labonte. Roll call vote, please. It's been a long day.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Meeting minutes are approved. Item number three on our regular agenda, the monthly planning report.
Thank you.
Please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. As you can see, we had our closeout of 2023 report in there with December reporting in pretty on par with the other months of the year, January as well, with the exception of it was hopping with building permits in January. Felt like we were doing a lot of those. So we're seeing a lot of middle housing, which is really interesting. Seeing a lot of people converting garages or removing separate garages and adding a unit or two onto their property. Really interesting, a few issues tend to pop up if they're not in the half mile from McLaughlin. We're seeing a few issues where you still have to provide one onsite parking space per unit. So folks are getting creative with that, looking at setbacks. And then everyone's filtered through Public Works to talk about utility connections and system development charges. So we're definitely learning a lot as we go, but seeing a lot of interest in adding more housing to the city. So I think it's a good thing overall. And then we had a pre-application at the very beginning of, or mid-January that was for the Lake Oswego Tigered River Water Intake Facility that pumps water from the river to West Lynn. So three cities that are not your city, but the facility is located in your city. And in 2021, during the ice storm on President's Day weekend, they lost power and really came close to a public crisis of not having enough water. And so they're looking to add a docking station onto that property that a temporary generator can be brought in in events, not all the time. And that has been submitted as an application, has been deemed complete, so that's coming to you next month.
Heather, I vaguely remember when that came before the planning commission, to my knowledge, it was three to four hour battery backup in the event of an outage for that pump station. Is that correct?
Are you, the one we reviewed recently?
Yeah.
That's a different facility.
Okay.
So this one is, is a whole different, it's the same applicant, Eric Iceman is the same representative, but this is a different facility that they'll want to continuously provide electricity to the site and continuously pump water until the power comes back on, and then they'll remove the generators from the site.
Wonderful. Okay. Is that, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but is that all?
That is all I have with the January and December reports, unless there are any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, well, then I would like to go to item number four, where we continue our public hearing for TXT dash 23 dash 03, the Gladstone Municipal Code Amendments for Chapter 17.78, Home Occupation.
Okay, well, as Chair Smith mentioned, this is continuation from the December hearing that we weren't able to do in January because of the weather. So we are continuing it here to February. I'm accompanied by Haley Kratz, who's awesome staff member with City of Gladstone and who did a lot of the drafting of the code changes that are before you this evening, as well as after the December public hearing, we worked together to make the updates that you'll see in the code this evening. So from December to now, the changes that we made were to require home occupation holders to be business license holders. We added an exemption for home occupations when you're doing a satellite home office. So you won't need to get a home occupation permit if you work for a business that's licensed elsewhere. We just made that more clear. We added an exemption for, or we clarified that we, though we prohibit any kind of auto maintenance or auto-related businesses, if you have a home office that's managing the business of that business, you can still do that, that you're still allowed to do that use. We defined the delivery vicinity that if you're getting packages to the site, that we're going to compare it to other residential deliveries within 250 feet. We removed the requirement to accommodate all parking on site because we can't do that so much anymore. And we removed the word monopolize from the requirement, the customers and clients not monopolize on street parking. We just left it as not generate excessive traffic or on-street parking. So there's a little bit of flexibility still there for the code compliance officer, but generally she feels like it's very manageable and implementable as worded here. So as it was before, we didn't make any changes to the text, to the staff report text. It still demonstrates compliance with the Oregon statewide planning goals, the Gladstone Municipal Code, Metro's Functional Plan, and the Transportation Planning Rule, all of which we have to do to make a development code change, which is recorded as a comprehensive plan amendment. So all of that information was submitted in the staff report that's gone to DLCD and is in the packet from December. So with that, we continue to recommend approval. We've got the packet queued up, so we can go through it, go through sections you'd like to discuss. But if the planning commission comes to a point of being able to recommend the language this evening, then we'd be looking to have you recommend approval to City Council for their meeting on March 12th, 2024 of this year. So we do have the packet queued up. If there are specific questions, or we can just start with general questions and then go to packet questions.
I do have a couple of questions. In our minutes from our last meeting, a former city council person had spoken about this, and I just see in the notes here, agreed with the council that clear and concise is very important. I think that was in reference to language. And there's two or three things in here that, to me, and I understand this is, my interpretation is subjective, but I think there's some gray language areas. Page 46, item number nine. I don't know how, how you define excessive traffic. I don't know how you define that.
Yeah, and I think that that would be defined through the code compliance program. So it would be up to the code compliance officer to define excessive traffic. I think that what they, she at this point, but what the code compliance officer would do would, you know, take a measure of what a local day's traffic in that neighborhood might be and what the level of this business is adding to it and, and determine if it's excessive.
Referring to traffic.
Sorry about that.
Well, there's two of them. There's traffic and parking. I don't know how you, how you can define that, but it, apparently you do. And like I said, it's subjective, but not necessarily saying it's anything other than that.
I, I agree with you. It is subjective and it leaves some interpretation by the code enforcement officer.
The other one is number 11. I hold a city business license and I have a home office, and I had to make some minor modifications in my house to accommodate that. And this says you can't do that. And I'm, I'm trying to understand why you can't do anything to the interior of your home that wouldn't require a building permit to accommodate a home office.
I'm just looking for the, do you, you're on 4-11?
Yes.
4-6.
Oh, page 46.
Oh, 4-6.
4-6-11.
Thank you.
Okay, got you. Oops, too far. Oh, no, not far enough.
That is a good question, Pat.
So no enlargements or alterations to the dwelling or an accessory building for the sole purpose of conducting a home occupation are permitted. Okay, so what I would recommend, because I, I think the intent here is building permit alteration.
Yes.
Alteration to the exterior. Okay, so no enlargements or alterations requiring a building permit.
Perfect.
Okay.
So that's going to be changed?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And then there's another one on page 45, number two, where you define heavy trucks as two or more axles. There's a lot of heavy trucks that only have one axle in the back. There's have some been axles on the front of pickup or any kind of trucks in a long, long time. So again, it's hair splitting, but and actually, there's probably some larger vehicles that don't have axles at all, that they have four-wheel drive, which operates independently of what we traditionally think of an axle as being. I don't know if that makes any difference, but it doesn't seem to be precise.
It's a, it's a good point. I'm trying to remember if that was existing language. Maybe I'll.
I think it was existing.
But it doesn't mean it shouldn't be fixed. Let me, I'm going to look for it in the revised port- portion so that we can see. What was the, do you have the citation number of which section that's in? 1778.
78040.
040, okay.
Number two.
Approval criteria and standards, yeah.
Great.
So. Instead of referring to axles, would it be like how many tons the truck is, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Wheel sets, you know, anything other than.
For that matter, you can just say a semi truck.
I, I think it also says IE two or more axle, so I would think that that would give the code enforcement some equivalency room to interpret that.
Yes, so I'm sorry, did, did you make a recommendation on how to change the language to accommodate?
Well, I mean, the current verbiage is vehicles used for delivery and pickup may not include heavy trucks, parentheses, IE two or more axles. So we're not saying that two or more axles is the minimum requirement. We're saying heavy trucks is the requirement. Two or more axles is an example of what we would consider a heavy truck.
Right.
Right?
Very good.
Which, in which case, my recommendation would be to leave that one alone.
Unless you feel that we should add a, an example.
These are subjective.
Okay.
Just, you know, in reading it, it didn't, it didn't ring true.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you can't do it, but not ring true.
Okay.
Ring is act, is completely accurate.
Right, okay, great.
Go ahead. Were you finished, Pat?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I don't, to number 11, the no enlargements or alterations to the dwelling or accessory building for the sole purpose of conducting home occupation are permitted. But I mean, if someone has a home business, it, on the permit process, is that something that they would have to? Like, how would the city know necessarily if they were doing an enlargement for their personal thing or for their business, or if they, hey, we're doing this, oh, boy, I have this extra space now, let me use it for my business. Is there, you know?
I mean, I don't think you would necessarily know unless there was a complaint. A neighbor said they bumped out, you know, so their business with all these business things are looking into my front area or something like that. It would be complaint driven, I think, in that case. We do have the ability to review building permits and have a say over that, but it would be a complaint. We don't necessarily, when I review a building permit, I don't contact Haley or Tammy to ask about a business license related to that site. So it's a, it's a good point, but I think if someone did bring a complaint, you'd have some code to rely upon to say, you know, that part shouldn't be used specifically as the business if you are expanding your home.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Yeah.
Do you have any further questions?
I think I'm all set.
Commissioner Wees.
Uh, just back on 11, is there any?
Hate 11.
Is there any standing data that tells if allowing ADUs for home office use has a trickle down to creating space for livable spaces in the, in the city?
Oh.
That's a good question.
I don't know of any data on that, but it's an interesting question. Yeah.
I could see where that could.
I mean, I definitely think if you are running a home business out of an ADU and then you grow into a space where you need to go do a commercial lease, and then you wanted to use that space as an ADU, that's, you know, the city is pretty flexible about doing that. If you've built an ADU that has kitchen and bathroom facilities, then you have paid those connection fees and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? Mr. Volbada, none?
Okay.
Well, I, I think we're, I think we're almost there, aren't we?
Do we want to talk a little more about excessive traffic and parking? And if we want to try to change that language or define it a little more? Or do we feel like, how would you do that? Let's let the code enforcement officer have it for a while, see how it goes and change it later if we need to.
Did we, by any chance, did you have an opportunity to maybe look at another city of our size to see what they wrote?
Yes, it's very consistent language with other cities. We looked at several, five or six. And then we also, I think from the League of Oregon Cities, received a publication about how to write home occupation language, and it's consistent with what other cities are doing and what's being recommended. Yeah.
Are, are there situations where a home business would have like a city-approved designated parking spot on street parking or something along those lines?
No, we don't do any kind of, that I know of, any kind of on-street designated parking, but you could certainly designate something on your driveway, you know, put a little sign on your garage door if that met your signage requirement. Yep.
It just has a way to try to manage the excessive on-street parking, which we wouldn't imagine. I mean, we're talking, the whole point of this home occupation is to have small businesses, so.
Yeah, and it does allow the code enforcement officer to say, hey, this is excessive. It's time to look for a lease if you're going to keep this many clients coming to your site.
And I, I do have to say, I've noticed the improvements. She's very diligent.
Yes, she is. She's great.
Yeah.
She responds to every.
Very, I mean, like, there's this car that you get right up to the end of Dartmouth to go on Oakfield. She obviously stopped there and said, yeah, you can't let it sit there. You'll have to cover it or remove it or something. I mean, I can see her work all throughout the city, so she's impressive.
Yes, and she responds to every pre-application or application that comes through. She does a review, lets us know if there's any issues now or potential issues in the future, so.
By any chance, did you run the traffic issue through her to see what her input was?
She did, yes. She was on our committee when we drafted the language, and she felt like it gave her a good amount of backup to rely upon, but also flexibility to make a determination.
Okay, excellent, because these are, I want to make sure that all of these are very enforceable, easy to, you know,
Yes.
Say, okay, this is, this is, these are the rules. Okay.
And for years, Avon was a part of the Traffic Safety Board, too, so she's.
She's awesome.
Yes.
I'm highly impressed with her work so far.
Do we need to add that verbiage along, like after, after everything, just, you know, and shall not generate excessive traffic or on-street, on-street parking as defined by dot, 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 just so that as people are coming in and looking at this code, it is kind of directing them towards that?
I, I think it's okay because this code, the first place people would ask is probably with planning, but if there was a complaint, the code enforcement officer would address it.
Okay.
So I think it's okay to leave it the way it is, but we would change the, I think we heard consensus to change that we'd require, that additions or expansions requiring a building permit, so we're making that change.
Excellent. I do like what her input, is there something that can be put at the very beginning so that people understand this is based on our codes and ordinances of the City of Gladstone?
Of, of this particular chapter, because the entire development code is part of the municipal code.
Okay. So I think. What do you think, Commissioner Volbada?
I think it's fine. I think it, it, it gives us flexibility. But yeah, I guess my only concern is, you know, if people are reading through this and they don't know where to go, but they know who to call, so.
They'll call the city and Haley will get them to the.
So I'm, yeah, this is not a, like a sticking point for me.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it will be a while before we have such a large staff that it's, things are going crosswise without knowing where things are. Yeah.
And Commissioners, is there any more questions or input? Well, would you like us to give a recommendation?
Yes, please, as revised this evening.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve file number TXT dash 23 dash 03, as noted with the edits made tonight on February 20th, referencing item number 11 on page 4 dash 6.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Volbada and seconded by Commissioner Pat Smith. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. We have our final version. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you. Yes, we will move.
I hope this will eliminate any and all confusion. Yes.
I hope so, too.
Yeah. So we don't have any issues moving forward. Okay, excellent. So I'd like to go ahead and adjourn this particular. Hold on here. Okay, I'd like, the meet, this is adjourned at 6:57. This public hearing on, what, I'm drawing a blank, Tuesday, February 20th. Okay. Next item. Item number five, public hearing for file DR dash 24 dash 02, new building and onsite improvements for eating and drinking venue. Steph, will the first report come from you?
It will, but we do need you to read the statement for quasi-judicial. Do we have that?
Yes, we do. I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I believe.
So just a brief moment, we'll get that, since it is a quasi-judicial design review application.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering file DR dash 24 dash 02. It's for a project location at 140 West Arlington Street, Gladstone, Oregon 97027. Tax lot number 22E20CA02100. It's for the development of the site with a taproom, single-story mezzanine, and space up to six mobile vending units. Outdoor seating and landscaping proposal includes new sidewalk, curb, and street tree, and does not include off-street vehicle parking. Okay. The procedure we would like to follow tonight is the Planning Department or the City Planning Report, applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close the hearing, and the planning commission decision, excuse me, discussion and decision. Now, does, does anyone, commission, commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant expertise pre-hearing contacts? Commissioner Volbada?
No expertise contact. I'm good to continue.
Okay, Commissioner Wees?
No contact, no concerns.
Commissioner Smith?
I have driven by it thousands of times since I've lived in Gladstone, so I'm well aware of the property.
Commissioner Labonte?
Uh, no contact. I am familiar with the, with the property.
I have no expertise contact, and I do pass by it. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Doesn't appear to be. Uh, is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the City Council on this matter? Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised. If the issues are to be appealed, failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request continuance to this hearing or in the alter, alternate, alternative to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action of damages in Circuit Court. If you are going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Before we do that, I just want to let you know that Commissioner Mercer is now on.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. So as you stated, Chair Smith, this is a design review hearing for the Arlington Tap Room, and there's a food cart pod portion to the front of the site. The image here is Google Street View from 2021. Since all of you drive by it and are familiar with it, you know that the building's no longer there, so that's a vacant lot that they are starting from scratch on. Let's see. Did I turn it off? Oh, let me turn it off and back on and just see. Maybe it fell asleep. Okay, thank you. So the site is shown in the bottom-left, two block, two lots in from Portland Avenue on West Arlington Street. The construction of the new taproom, which will be a single-story with a mezzanine and space for up to six mobile vending units, outdoor seating and landscaping, will be on this five-thousand-square-foot site. It is Zoned C2 Community Commercial and is within our downtown core overlay district. So this is our first design review that we've gotten to look at in the downtown core overlay, so it's exciting. It's exciting for the city.
It is a big deal.
Yeah. The downtown core overlay is the map with the red dashed line shown in the top right. This is just an example of the plans that were submitted. I have them zoomed in so we can see them a little better, but the proposed site plan, floor plans, and landscape plan with Arlington Street along the bottom of your site, and now Arlington Street is going to be along the right side, tipped it so that we can see it better here. The permanent building structure is going to be on the left, the taproom, it's going to be pretty close to the rear property line, but enough space for a man door to be able to exit out of the rear of the building on the first floor. In the front, there's a really light dashed line that you can see where it says covered patio. Those tables will be mostly covered from the elements so that you can dine outside, and then space for up to six food trucks there toward the front of the site, as well as garbage and recycling enclosure, bike parking, and that eight-foot public utility easement with the stormwater facility in there. If we go over to, oh, and a driveway down the middle of the property that allows access for the food trucks and other deliveries and that sort of thing. Oh, and next one, please. Forgot that that's not working. The building itself is one-story with a mezzanine. It's open to below seating area up top with some mechanical, but on the first floor, it's seating area, a bar, walk-in cooler for taps, so that it can be a taproom, and two ADA-accessible restrooms with a central entrance that goes out to the covered patio area upstairs, basically just extra seating. Next, please. As far as landscaping, approximately twenty-three percent of the site is landscaped, so it does exceed our fifteen percent requirement. The bottom of the screen, there's a note cut off that says the existing fencing will remain, so six-foot fencing around the site. And then the note on the top right is saying that the grass and the plantership will be replaced where needed. So landscaping all around the perimeter, as well as in the front, in the stormwater treatment facility. Next slide, please. As far as elevations, they are proposing to do roll-up doors with quite a bit of glass glazing in those. The doors that you walk through are glass, and then upstairs, there's some clear-story windows that are providing light onto the mezzanine area, and then windows on each of the sides. You can also see the building materials identified here. There is some architectural metal being used, so that'll be something for the Planning Commission to specifically approve, as you do with design review. If you decide not to approve that, we would put that in a condition that that would need to be changed, but staff found that this proposal did seem to meet the design aesthetic of the downtown core and of other projects that have been recently proposed, especially with the open wood truss system over the patio cover, and then the glazing on the doors. Next slide, please. So in the staff report, we did recommend approval with three conditions, three special conditions in addition to our standard conditions and our notes that we put into all design reviews. The first being that the use shall not operate between the hours of midnight and five AM. That does require a conditional use permit to operate during those hours, and the reason you're seeing this here and maybe haven't seen it in other design reviews is just because of the nature of the use. I wanted to make sure it was clear that those are the hours that you would need a conditional use to come in. If you do decide that your business model changes and you want to do that, you can come back for that conditional use, and we can look at that. But right now, between midnight and five AM, everyone's off-site. The second is about the lighting plan. However, I'm gonna pause on that because there was a submittal of the lighting plan, so I'm no longer recommending that condition. And then the third is compliance with the submitted comments that we received from Public Works, Water Environment Services, and Clackamas Fire District. So if you'll scroll to the next slide, please. So today I did receive an updated photometric plan showing that that rear light will be downlight only. It'll be directed so that it doesn't shine off-site at any level that would impact the neighboring property to the rear. I have had conversations with the property owner to the rear who's reviewed the entire packet and doesn't have any concerns with the application, so that's great. And then, next slide, so my updated recommendation is that we, that the city approves this design review with the standard conditions and two special conditions of approval, as we don't need to condition the lighting plan any longer. With that, I'm happy to answer questions and the applicants here as well.
If, if I may ask, just, so between twelve AM and five AM, but you had mentioned that nobody can be on the premises. Does that include employees?
It doesn't mean you can't be on the premises. You're just not operating the business.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're totally good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Can you direct me to where I can find the Public Works, WES, and Clackamas Fire District comments? Having a hard time finding them.
Yes. I probably hid them. Let's see. Usually I put them before, I think they were before the applicant's mittel. Let me just scroll through here.
Five thirty-seven.
Thank you, Tammy.
Yep, there you go.
Yes, ending on five forty.
So any, any other input or questions, Commissioners?
That, the second story, this office?
Mezzanine.
It's a mezzanine. It's set up with tables so that if you needed to go up there and sit, yeah. Additional seating, or, you know, sometimes if people have a meeting, there are something, they might go upstairs and put a couple of tables together, is how I pictured it.
Wedding reception, whatever, yeah.
Sure.
Is the applicant or representative present this evening? Would you like to come forward and add anything to the staff report? Okay. Do the planning Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Do any Commissioners have questions for the architect?
I've got just one question for you, sir, regarding them.
Please have, come up and present your name and and make sure that mic is on so that we can get it on the recording.
Thank you. Neat idea. I like it.
Thanks.
Thank you. And my question is, the, um, are, as far as the closing time of the do you have, I'm sure that's been a discussion that you've been having. That's what I, that's what I thought.
I thought we were gonna do about ten would be, because nine-thirty, and then you have probably people hanging out.
Right.
Ten o'clock. I don't want to be that late.
Good. I, I figured that, when I heard midnight, I just wanted to kind of lock that down. But although you could operate up to.
We could, but I don't see the value. Nothing good happens after eleven.
Very good. Thank you.
Our little city does pretty much close down by ten o'clock.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Do you have any questions of us?
We just want to get started, so as soon as we get the go-ahead, we've been interviewing lots and lots of excavation companies and things like that, and we just want to make sure we're doing everything right, and it works well.
How far out do you anticipate?
We would like to break ground tomorrow, but probably breaking ground, my guess would be probably four weeks. Well, it depends. I don't know what the permit process takes.
Yeah, well, they are, sure. But we're looking like within a year, you want to get kind of going.
I would like to open up at the end of summer.
Very cool.
That'd be the goal.
Very good.
So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Austin, you said that you had reviewed the exterior building materials and found them to be within code?
That is correct, yes. They're generally an architectural siding material, hardy plank type, but there is a little bit of metal along the bottom, and then some along the top to kind of tie it together.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese, I believe, had another question for you, if you could come back up.
Yeah, thank you. We, we have, a lot of folks from this group worked on the downtown core, so we are excited to have this application. You know, we do not mandate parking requirements for the most part, but we do have to think about the way that new development impacts the flow of traffic, and so any considerations for what you expect your customers to be, where you expect your customers to be parking, and then also any special considerations for food delivery services, as, you know, a lot of times you have people from outside of our neighborhoods coming to pick up food. Right, we're hoping for walk, I mean, a lot of just locals just walking in. I mean, that's really kind of the whole family environment. I mean, there's apartments all around us, so that's really a thing. As far as the delivery services, I think we're gonna have to cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm not, again, we're really hoping that people show up. That's really the key, but great question. On that, for sure.
Any further questions?
So one thing, the roof is metal. So keep that in mind on your review. I think that was okay also.
Right, the roofing material is not subject to needing special planning commission approval at siding.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now is the time for public testimony. Do we have anyone? Well, first, we'll hear testimony from proponents. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I have not received anyone requesting to speak.
Okay. Hear testimony from opponents.
I also have not received any correspondence or request to speak.
And this also is the time for the applicant rebuttal. Does any, does the applicant have any further comments that he would like to make? Okay. If there's no further testimony, I will entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I'll recommend that we close the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Weiss made the motion to close the public hearing, and it was seconded by Commissioner Labonte. Could you do a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Commissioner Volbetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercer?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, the public hearing is closed at seven sixteen PM. Okay. So deliberations, comments, questions, discussion. Looks awesome.
Liver and onions.
Cabbage and sausage.
Cabbage and sausage.
There'll be no waiting at that one.
Do you have any already? Not yet, okay. Okay.
May I ask, do you guys have experience in this type of business, or just, all right? To what capacity, if you don't mind me asking? Very good.
Awesome.
Okay.
Commissioners, if you're wanting someone to come speak, would you ask them to come up so we can get that on the record, please? Thank you.
Because it doesn't pick up. Any other questions, discussion before a motion?
I appreciate the completeness of the package. It's very obvious that you guys have spent a lot of time putting this information together, and that's very appreciated.
I, I second that. It was extremely well thought out.
Yes.
All the information was there. You were, you came prepared. Thank you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve application number DR dash two-four dash zero-two as recommended by the planning staff with the two special conditions, one oper, hours of operation and two, the compliance with the three agency, agencies of Gladstone.
Commissioner Mercer will second.
Okay, Commissioner Volbetta made the motion, and Commissioner Mercer seconded it. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercer?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbetta?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. It's going before planning, for, not Planning Commission, but City Council.
No, this is, this is it.
We're done?
Yeah.
Go on, start planning.
I will just say, you know, next step, sort of work with Public Works, get those plans in for the street and utility connections while you're working on building permits and things like that.
Thank you for coming. Uh, next item on our regular agenda is item number six, appointment of Planning Commission member to the Town Center Stakeholder Advisory Committee.
Yes, so we are kicking off our Gladstone Town Center project. We are going to have a stakeholder advisory committee that is made up of some business owners, some residents, and a city councillor, which is Mayor Milch, was appointed at their last meeting, a planning commissioner that we'd like to appoint this evening, a representative from DLCD, and a representative from Metro. Do we want to just take a moment and let people leave if they would like to?
I would just like to add that I've been involved in this since they first did the the, what was the first meeting they had? It was like eight years ago.
Downtown revitalization.
Yeah. Eight or nine years ago, and I was a part of that because I'm like three blocks away from Portland Avenue. So I will offer my services to serve in that capacity, just because I've been a part of this, getting to this point, unless someone has a burning desire to do this.
I, I will just mention that we are starting to schedule out, and we're looking at trying to kick off quickly, and they're going to send out a doodle poll probably tomorrow, and we're thinking March eighteenth or nineteenth for the first, which is a Monday or Tuesday, and we're hoping people might be able to join us virtually an hour and a half during the day instead of doing another evening meeting.
Okay.
Is that a?
That would be a problem for me.
That's, we, we can do it at like five PM.
That would be better.
Yeah.
That's doable.
An option. They'll send out a doodle.
Does anybody have a, have strong feelings about wanting to be a part of this?
Well, I, I do. I understand that you've been working at it for a while, but yeah, I'd definitely throw my hat in the ring.
Are they all going to be around five o'clock, the meetings?
They haven't been set, um, but I think the idea was that the majority of the folks who are part of it are downtown business owners. And Marcy Jory, your economic development and tourism coordinator, mentioned that most folks are closed on those days. So they'd be able to do something during the daytime, which is why we were sort of targeting the daytime, but it's not set in stone. They're going to send out a doodle poll for the first meeting. And then, um, once we have the group together, we can talk more about that.
How would you feel about us sharing if they were during the day and I couldn't attend, you'd attend? And vice versa, if they were in the evening, I would go to those meetings?
That.
Could we do that?
It's even a possibility.
I think so. I, um, I think we could put you both forward and then, um, you would be the representative of the planning commission, whichever one of you came and the two of you could coordinate it.
Would you be comfortable with that?
If you're comfortable with that, yeah.
I'm fine with it. I, if it's during the day, because I work a full-time job, it would be kind of hard.
Yeah, teamwork makes the dream work. Let's do it too.
Exactly.
And we have a chance to, to.
I'm all, I'm all about the compromise. Let's compromise. Okay, so.
That sounds great.
Let's, let's run it that way.
I'll give both your names to Marcy. I believe she's sending out the doodle poll tomorrow to get the first.
My city email isn't working properly and Tammy has the correct email address to use. Okay.
And may I put my, uh, well, I can give the, uh, great, I have a question about my city email, so I was hoping to send it along too.
Okay, we can use your personal until we get that resolved. Yes.
Okay, the next item is item number seven. This is for information only, but would it be all right if I, I or someone reads this into the record so that we have it or is that necessary?
It's not necessary to do that if everybody reads, reads.
Wow, it was really nice to get this letter.
Yeah, individuals can read it on, in the packet that's online as well.
Yeah, I just, it was a pleasure working with them. Even with their first meeting, they didn't have everything all nailed down and they weren't quite prepared, but then they came back. I mean, I think they did everything that they needed to do and I hope they were pleasurable to work with.
Yes.
Good.
Definitely.
Then great. No, it's nice to get positive feedback. We don't always get that. But I know this body really tries to do their very, very best and I'm really proud of each and every one of you because we really do care about what our decisions are and how it impacts the city. So I hope we get more of these moving forward. Yeah, I, I would like to see that as a goal. Because, you know, there were a lot of things to consider and, uh, I think we worked well on this one, especially when they didn't really know what they were doing.
Right.
And I don't think we made them feel inadequate in any way either. No, I think we all just genuinely were wanting to work to be able to meet their goals and be able to accommodate and we did it.
I, I don't know. This is the appropriate time. I was planning on doing it with business from the board, but I do have a couple of comments regarding at least my decision with one of the items with that property. I don't know when the best time to bring that up, but I figured business from the board.
Business from the board.
Yeah, business from the planning commission would probably be, which is our next item. No, business from the public. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak, Tammy?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, so business from the planning commission. Let's start with Commissioner Smith.
I don't have anything. Thank you for asking though.
Okay, Commissioner Mercero, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
I would like to say that I apologize for being a touch late. I just got back from CPA doing taxes.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you were able to join us. Thank you. Do you have anything, any business you'd like to share with the planning commission?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Labonte.
Uh, yeah, just, I guess, two things. There's a concern that keeps coming up in some of these committees that I'm aware of, and I guess has in part to do with, well, it has to do with Meldrum Bar, the, um, and what, and I, the remote control car course that's there. And, but that's kind of besides the point, but what I wanted to mention here, um, and my concern and one that I've personal experience with and I've spoke to other people is just what that is doing to the pedestrian pathway between the RC track and the river, let's say. I have no strong feelings about the RC park. You know, it's great people come to the city, but I, I do have strong feelings about making it more difficult to access our, our public pathways. And it's consistently muddy and frankly dangerous there. I've almost wiped out. My wife is almost wiped out. I've heard, I know it's anecdotal, but I've heard plenty of stories about this. I know the park commission's been working on this too. So I would really love to see the city do something, in the very least, just a way to clear up that pedestrian pathway because it's dangerous and it's.
And that is really appropriate for the parks, the Parks Planning Board.
It, yeah, and they've been, they've been working at this for a while to very little, um, you know, the problem still exists. So I just wanted to mention it here.
Should be brought up at the park board meeting to discuss and, and, uh, speaking with our Public Works Director, Darren Canaparoli on that as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate that and I know that's been happening a lot, so I was hoping to kind of put a different voice on it in a different facility, in different capacity rather, uh, because I do believe it's important and I'm concerned, uh, you know, someone's going to take a, a big slip there and it is an unsanctioned park. The second, not to bring down the mood, but, um, and the second thing I want to mention is regarding my, I guess, my lack of curiosity with the Dunaway project that went up. I'm excited about it, but I, I'm wondering if there is a process for, or just to maybe vent myself. I know that the code, makes it so that they have to have it paved there. Um, I do regret not pushing back against that to try to go for gravel. And, um, for a couple of different reasons, but I feel like it would make it far more expensive there. And I'm not sure necessarily why the asphalt. So I do, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I do kind of regret.
I remember you giving the reason for that at that meeting.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead and if you could repeat that.
I mean, the, the first reason is that the code requires it, but the, I think the code requires it because of the potential for dust and dirt going off the side onto the public road with the deliveries. But I think, you know, if it's something you want to take up as far as like a code revision to that design review criteria, we could certainly talk about that.
That's something I'd be interested in just in the way that, you know, this is a little bit of a different zone for our city here. Um, and I really feel like it's, um, it works against, you know, their goal of getting going. And I don't know if, um, being near the water in the creek here, um, it almost seems as if runoff is an issue that gravel, you know, is better in some ways. And as it being a dirt area now and there not being much of a problem with dust and things to that extent. I just wish I had talked about it more in that meeting. So I just wanted to just express that. Um, and I wish if, if I had that back, I'd certainly want to, I, you know, I would have tried to push against the asphalt personally. One way or the other, uh, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yeah, I just had one thing real quick. Um, I know with, with all of you guys being very involved in the city of Gladstone and I hope whoever's listening or, or follows up on this, um, I hope everybody knows that we have, um, uh, like a, um, a public garden at Meldrum Bar Park. It, I know they've been looking for more engagement, particularly this year. If that is right up your alley, I would encourage you to check it out. It's really great.
Does that, that, Tammy, does that fall under the parks board too?
It would, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But there is information also on the website regarding the community gardens.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Reese.
I just want to say, great, great finish of a conversation we had in December. We made it look very easy to finish off the home use occupation, but you know, a lot of conversation and a lot of edits. And thank you to Haley as well for writing and accommodating a lot of the changes that we proposed. I, I am so glad to see the first, uh, design review for someone in the downtown core. I've, I've still got some concerns about parking overall and how we think about parking and, you know, when is the right time for the city to step in and create space for parking for these businesses? We're bringing businesses and if every person that qualifies for this great allowance that we've, um, made available to property owners in that area, we're creating the kind of traffic that this business will create, we probably, that probably would not be sustainable. So, um, thank you for being part of the revitalization. You too, thank you for being part of that. And, uh, please continue to keep our concerns in mind as, as you're having discussion. At some point, I think we'll have to do something.
And it's very hard right now with the state. Am I going to get this wrong here, Heather? Is it the state of Oregon that's done away with all the parking requirements?
That's right, uh, only within a half mile of transit. And then for the other areas in the city, the city does have a say in how they reform parking standards and that is going to be a part of the, um, overall Gladstone Town Center project, even though it affects beyond the town center boundary. It's its own task to do parking reform. And interestingly, we have to finish parking reform by the end of this year. We're under, um, requirement to finish by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. But the town center, we have until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So the parking will actually wrap up in this calendar year, parking reform for the city.
Am I correct that we're having a work, a joint work session in April with?
That's correct.
City council and we're going to be discussing parking, aren't we?
That is correct. Yes, and so, um,
Put it on your calendars.
But it is true that this site in particular fell within a half mile, you know, much closer, but within a half mile of McLaughlin. And so we cannot mandate any parking minimums. So, um, I really think when we talk about parking reform, we're going to be talking about, um, a lot of residential land. And then, you know, along eighty-second drive. I, I think a lot of the city is covered by the no parking mandate portion, but I do have some folks in my office who do mapping and they're going to map that for us so that when we have that conversation, we can see exactly where we're talking about.
Excellent, because I do remember when I served with, uh, Mayor Milch on the downtown revitalization. We were discussing the parking issues then.
Yes.
And he and I were, I don't know if we were just, we were being creative and I said, well, you know, what about like, say, the Gladstone Christian Church? Their parking lot, you know, with the exception of Wednesday nights is empty. Maybe we could lease some of that and it's a business opportunity for somebody to start a business to park cars and then have some sort of, you know, uh, way to, to transport, like valet parking in a way, you know, kind of thing. And I think that's how we're going to fit the needs of parking is getting creative ideas on how to accommodate needs for people.
I think absolutely. I think that it's great to think about all those, um, outside of the box ideas. And then the other piece, um, that I think is important too is, you know, some education about like really how far can you park away from, um, something? You know, in the planning world, we always say, um, how far back do you park at Costco? You know, you could park probably here and get a lot of stuff on the Portland Avenue Core for the distance you would walk from the gas station at Costco, if that's where you'd end up parking, you know?
It's like if you go to Salt and Straw in Southeast Division, or you go to Alberta and go to a restaurant, you know, Northeast Alberta, you're blocks away. Yeah.
Right.
And you're parked on a side street and it's, but thousands of people come and it's just, I feel for the residents along there, but.
Right, yes. Um, so we just want to make sure that we're, um, giving the broad picture, but then also being creative in how we're solving the problem or addressing the needs.
Creative. Okay.
May, may I ask, since we're kind of on this a little bit, we're too deep in the parking, but we can, I'm, I'm not mistaken, we can still have like time limits to parking, let's say, on Portland Avenue, or is that too?
Yes, you can do, um, parking management on your city streets. You just can't require private property owners to put parking on their sites.
So, and that's true of Arlington or any of those, we could have a.
Yeah, you could look at any of those.
What, what is the budget for the town center and is it funded?
It is funded. It's, um, seventy-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand of that's going to a market feasibility study. We just found out last week that we got that additional.
I was talking about the whole thing.
Oh, the, the whole, um.
Right, downtown revitalization plan, maybe that's the, the better term.
Well, that one's done, right? The downtown revitalization plan of twenty seventeen and that was funded.
It is funded.
Yes, and then now the piece that we're doing where we're meeting with the stakeholder advisory group and we're reforming parking, that is the seventy-five thousand dollar new grant. We haven't spent, you know, maybe a couple of thousand dollars kicking that project off. So we have seventy-three thousand dollars left in that budget.
Okay, and when you say fund, the funding for the first part in two thousand seventeen, I don't remember getting awarded a, a very large sum, but enough to get some of it done.
Yes, yeah. Um, I'm not sure what that grant number was either.
I don't remember either, but I know that we're going to have to do this process in phases.
Yes, um, this one, um, is going to run through June of twenty twenty-five. Um, and the, the seventy-five thousand is from, um, the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development. They have, um, climate friendly and equitable communities grant funding money and so it came out of that.
All right. I don't have anything business-wise, other than please remember that we're going to have a joint session with the city council. Do we have a date for that in April?
Yes, we do.
April twenty-third. And it will be at five thirty PM.
Five thirty PM? Okay, in chambers or in the meeting?
It will probably be in the chambers.
Okay.
But before that, we will see you on March nineteenth for a regular planning commission meeting.
All right. If there isn't anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to, to end our meeting this evening.
Okay, a second.
Uh, Commissioner Labonte made the motion to adjourn our meeting. It was seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes, sorry again for being late.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting adjourns at seven thirty-seven.